This lady in the car county working, Natalie Hope. How are we all doing?
Mr. P.
Here.
Winnie Camp.
Here.
Mark Tom.
Here.
Nate Frank.
Here.
Grayson.
Richard Winters.
Here.
Ronald Dean.
Here.
Harry Sanders.
Present.
Charles Martin Cannon.
Present.
Elsie Kessler.
Here.
Steve Wren.
Present.
Alden.
Here.
Joanne Lane.
Here.
Present.
Charlie Baker.
Here.
Bobby D.
Present.
Ben Arnold.
Here.
Steve Chambers.
Here.
John Lewis.
Here.
Johnny Carter.
Present.
Russell Cye.
Here.
Scott Sam.
Here.
Pat Nick.
Present.
Robert Goff.
Here.
Now we'll stand over for prayer. Mr. Todd. That's great. Father, we thank you for working today. Thank you, Lord, for my son and what is across. Now lead the guide and direct us morning, Lord, as we carry out the business of the county. We thank you for our state. God, we thank you for our country. God, we thank you, Lord, for each and every soldier, boy, god, that's on the barn fields. Watch over and care upon, keep them safe. Thank you for the ones who're represented here today, Lord, for the sick and shut in, whoever they might be, so that God has those folks here, Lord, that's safe, if God did that to a given, a power be at home. Lead the guide and direct, thank you again for everything you do. Christ is precious, make you pray.
Amen.
For the prayer was millions of places with.
Wait. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll move on to our public comments, uh, for the meeting. If anybody wants to speak, now's the time to come up and address anything that's on the agenda. In public comments. In public comments. Saying that, we'll move on, uh, to the acceptance of minutes of a previous meeting. So have a motion. Motion by Mr. Lewis, seconded by Mr. Chambers, to accept the minutes of a previous meeting. Any discussion? Mr. Von Cannon.
I'd like to point out the rules committee recommendation of December of two thousand and two.
It would even case compensation. Was that in our minutes for last, largest curate issue?
Each committee, the attended committee members will receive compensation as set by the commission. Attendance is defined as physical presence at the call meeting for a minimum of one hour or presence at the entire meeting if the meeting is less than one hour. Does that mean that, uh, does that need looking at from a standpoint of of attendance is defined, and therefore you'll get compensation if you stay for the one hour? After that, what happens?
Mr. Von Cannon doesn't have to have anything to do with minutes. Uh, if you'd like to make a motion after this to, uh, refer this to the Rules of Bylaw Commission that are committed, that would be in order.
Then that needs to go where the Rules Committee. Double dipping is another thing that's
Thank you, Mr. Von Cannon.
that needs to be looked at.
All in favor of accepting the minute, say aye.
Aye.
Although, motion carries. Now, Mr. Von Cannon will entertain the motion from you if you want to refer something to the Rules of Bylaw Committee. Mr. Von Cannon, would you like to now make a motion to refer that to the Rules of Bylaw Committee?
That's up to you. You're the chairman, sir. And that's up to you because you were a member of this committee in two thousand and two, so if you're satisfied with that.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Von Cannon.
That's a political answer, sir.
Well, that's a political statement, sir. Uh, and, uh, you know, I hope that all of it, but our reelection speeches to our own time, not bring them to a business committee.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Those records are made in this minutes, this what we're accepting now. So thank you for the motion to do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next we have our delivery of bonds.
In the church, James Rogers, when the apple, Ron Starne, Larry Arnold Norris, President of the Church of Children, Sam Crowe, and Sarah Renee Hoister, Alyssa McLeever, June Baynes, Patricia S. Lovey, Deborah Van Scrue, Sherry J. Linner, George M. Stett, Landon J. Isaac, thank you, Jay Lewis, Weemel Schaaf, Regina Harris, Jennifer Arnold, Billy C. Barnes, Alvie, Halton, Norma McPeters, Sheila S. Robinson, S. Joe Taylor, Sherry Sheeps, George F. Murchew, Kathleen Arthaya, Angela Wilson, Rachel.
Have a motion approved?
Second.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kirby to approve, seconded by Mr. Brown. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Although, motion carries. Now we'd like to recognize our elected and appointed officials. Would y'all can stand? Appreciate your service. Next we'll have a presentation from the sheriff.
Just one of, either one of Mr. Baller, would you help me here just a second now? It's very proud day, just taking just a couple of minutes here, but it's feel like it's important and we recognize it. Really, uh, one of my captains actually brought this to my attention sometimes you forget, um, how many years goes by really quickly, but very proud of the men and women in Carter County Sheriff's Office. I think, uh, if you look through the line and through the many years of service, uh, it's very hard enough to recognize those. But in saying that, we've been very proud to hire some of the very best in the area instead of starting out their career. And I'd start off first, we're recognizing Ms. Tracy Phipps. She will just come up for just a second. Tracy, uh, came to us through the four inch extension office and became a Carter County Deputy and has taken one of the SRO positions and went to, uh, the Cloudland Community and she has just thrived up there and she was recently voted the outstanding paraprofessional, um, of the second nine weeks by Cloudland High School and I want to recognize her. And staying with our new, we just sent a new academy class to Donaldson and, uh, right now I'd ask that Mr. Scott Wigmire come up. We sent four, they told us that the, uh, our four was the top of the class and it was a very hard decision, I'll let across, I think it was roughly, seventy five, ninety three officers across the state at Donaldson and, uh, Mr. Wigmire was awarded the, uh, Leadership Award, uh, for all those candidates for the state of Tennessee, so on behalf of Tuesday, thank you, sir. This one's in recognition, but it's also a sad, uh, morning, but if I ask that Elizabeth and the police officer, Sarah Ellison, will come up. Sarah and I only took a long time to start our career basically together at Johnson City and it's good to be home in Carter County, but, uh, as I read this, I want to present this to Sarah Ellison, Elizabeth, the Police Department, and as I read it, you'll understand. This is honoring a fallen officer, K-9 Caber, born on July the fourteenth, nineteen ninety-eight, died November the fourth, two thousand and thirteen. Service at the Carter County Sheriff's Office, uh, two thousand to two thousand and seven, handler Sarah Ellison, who served as a deputy sheriff for Carter County Sheriff's Office from two thousand to two thousand and eight. Astonishing career. During his career, K-9 Caber was responsible for the seizure of more than three hundred and ninety pounds of marijuana, three pounds of cocaine, one pound of methamphetamine, seven bundles of heroin, eleven weapons, eight vehicle seized, thirty criminal apprehensions, and more than a hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars in currency. K-9 Caber also conducted numerous public demonstrations, school searches, and assists to other law enforcement agencies. On behalf of the citizens of Carter County, the great state of Tennessee, it is an appreciation and recognition of the many years of dedicated service at the Carter County Sheriff's Office. Your outstanding efforts displayed while honorably serving in public service for the Carter County Sheriff's Office shall forever be remembered in keeping our citizens safe. Thank you on behalf of the grateful county, state, and, uh, just one more. I'm gonna ask that these four come up and stand in front of Lieutenant Forrest Sharp, Captain Rocky Croyle. Uh, retired captain, and he still was part-time, Wendell Treadway. And Mr. Ward. You guys want to see him move a moment? This is very important. These folks have given over thirty years of service, the citizens of Carter County, and are still at it. Um, but let me read the dates now, I'm gonna read, they're all the plaques, uh, say the same, but, uh, current captain Wendell Treadway, February the tenth, nineteen seventy-seven. Wendell, I won't tell you how old I was then.
He was in the first grade.
I was. Say nothing. Uh, to the present, Lieutenant Forrest Sharp, September the eighth, nineteen eighty, to the present.
Speed sharp.
And I'm gonna hold Captain Croyle's and read it. His dates are December the fifteenth, nineteen eighty-three, to the present, and Ms. Kim McWord, y'all's running around again, December twenty-second, nineteen eighty-three. If you'll let me read it, you would recognize her service. But on behalf of the citizens of Carter County and the great state of Tennessee, it is an appreciation and recognition of over thirty years of dedicated service at the Carter County Sheriff's Office. Your outstanding efforts and selfish contributions displayed while honorably serving in public service for the Carter County Sheriff's Office and throughout your law enforcement career shall be forever remembered in keeping our citizens safe. Thank you on behalf of a grateful county, state, and country. Our thirty-plus years of employees, would you give a hand?
Wendell, you want to speak, your voice? Here's your applause.
I do appreciate you allowing me to recognize those thirty-year employees and thanks to the guys that, uh, remind me, it's very important that we honor those guys. Thirty years is a long time and I saw on Fox News this morning, a police officer stopping, throwing a football with a kid. Sometimes it's more than just putting somebody in jail, so we really appreciate it.
Sheriff, let me take this time to, uh,
Give him a laugh.
especially those, uh, with thirty years and over, but to all your officers in your department, city, and state. I have over thirty years of law enforcement service. And I want to thank them and tell them how much I appreciate them. I know they have the dedication that it takes and also the tenacity to, uh, stay with the job that is so stressful in a lot of different ways and I appreciate them very much.
Thank you for saying that. And while I'd be remiss, and one thing I wanted to get with the family members of those that were just recognized standing, they're the real heroes behind the families. Thank you for giving me a couple of minutes. Thank you.
Sure. Now we'll have Mr. Ken Hughes to give us a presentation concerning Tweety Trail.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Where can I look at my computer? I have PowerPoint.
You need PowerPoint? You need PowerPoint? Fine. Maybe they thought you were going to that screen. You are, maybe, maybe with Mr. Von Cannon, he was right there, maybe, whatever, how far do you need to go back?
Uh, just, uh, just need to protect that.
Yeah, probably better.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. Uh, my name is Ken Hughes. Uh, I'm a member of the Tweety Trail Task Force. We are a private entity, established by the city of Johnson City, to help build public support and, uh, to advise the public about the Tweety Trail and also to help the public. I'm here today in the status of just providing public information, since most of this trail actually is inside of Carter County, it's an appropriate state to the, uh, to the commission election of what status is.
Appreciate you, Ken. All right, let's see if we can get going here. Don't you love these technical problems? I'm not familiar with this, uh, protecting.
Okay, you'll be heading towards Carter County as well as been on the task force. Of course, Sheriff Magnus is a member. Uh, Bill Carter, Elizabethan, and a member of the Elizabethan City Council is a member. I live in a twelve hollow manhood behind Happy Valley High School. And Dr. Dan Schumacher, who lives way up Sun Creek, is the, uh, task force's chairman. The Tweety Trail is the new rail trail between Johnson City and Elizabethan and it runs along the bed of the old East Tennessee and western of Carolina, uh, more recently the East Tennessee Railroad. It's gonna be ten miles long, it runs from near downtown Johnson City through, uh, Happy Valley into Elizabethan and up on up to, uh, near about a forge and more active areas near Snap on Tool. It's one that there are thousands of miles of rail trails in the United States, but they're only a handful in Tennessee. We're going to the first and we're actually going to the longest. Johnson City has already afforded immense resources, and they're actually approaching a million dollars of money to put into this trail. Six hundred thousand dollars for biodegradable, a hundred thousand dollars for master plan, sixty thousand dollars for engineering, a hundred thousand dollars in this year's budget, a hundred thousand dollars for the next year's budget, and they have already started, uh, construction. Construction's starting to write out, and clearing the trail up and getting it ready for all of the other things that need to be done. The one thing important next to their lights here is that Johnson City made a decision first thing, that they were going through bypass using either state or federal grants. They realized that they could do this for half the cost and half the time if we look at local resources. So that's the way to think of it. As a result of that, the first section of this trail from Johnson City to Sycamore Shoal State Park will open by whatever date of this year. Don't know how well you can see this map, but the trail has been divided into three sections. Plushtown in red right here, section one, that's what's actively being worked on. It goes from near downtown Johnson City, about two blocks from Carter County Baseball Park, from there to the back, along, uh, City Road across US three twenty-one, along Sycamore Road, takes a left turn, parallels in Milligan Highway down to Happy Valley, goes through the length of Elizabethan, and then turns along State Line Road and will end near Snap on Tool. What you see in black right here is section two of the trail. Section one runs from Johnson City to Sycamore Shoal State Park. That's being actively worked on. Section two in black runs from Sycamore Shoals to downtown Elizabethan. Section three in orange goes from downtown along State Line Road to Snap on Tool. There are also two spur trails that are being developed simultaneously, one from ETSU over to the trailhead, another one from Tinkertown Historic Farm, and it will come in somewhere along Sycamore Road, we don't know exactly where it is. I don't need to tell you about how important this railroad was to development of this entire region. For that, for that reason, its history is very important to us. It runs along some of the most important sites in the county. It runs right by Sycamore Shoal State Park, across streets and two blocks of the covered bridge, and also gets out into some pretty temper sites between Johnson City and Elizabethan. Now these trails are very, very popular. Uh, I couldn't resist taking this picture last year, I was down in Greenville, South Carolina riding the swamp rabbit trail and, uh, a housing development was being put up right along the trail and the fact that it is the land border, the trail was itself a great attraction. I know there's been a lot of concern about what sort of effect these trails have on local residents. The experience everywhere these trails have been built has been improved. The people who use them are, are neighborly, they're respectful, they do the trash, they want these trails to be kept in good shape for their, for the use and for the development of the future. So once and all, first of all, the surface. The beds are taken care of, it's been there for well over a hundred years. So in order to get this trail ready, all you have to do is clean it up, get out the trash, and spread gravel, roll it, level it. That's it. The trail surface to begin with is going to be chacked, made of fine gravel, and we have obtained that at a discount price. Later on, the section of it may be paved. The biggest, most expensive part of this is the bridges. There are seven bridges between Johnson City and Elizabethan. We have obtained financial support for seven, for six of those bridges, and if anybody has sixty thousand dollars that they would like to donate to us, okay, I gotta check that. Uh, if anybody has sixty thousand dollars who'd like to donate to the large bridge, the large threshold over US three twenty-one between Johnson City and Elizabethan, it's for sale. Road crossings are happy, concerned with safety, there are thirty-some road crossings and driveway crossings between, uh, between the ends of the trail. Only four of those are major concerns and I have to report that it looks like those are all taken care of. Also, the old quarry that's across the road from Happy Valley Elementary School is a safety concern that's very great, but at the same time, it is a safety concern, it looks like that has been probably taken care of. This trail is for recreation and exercise, for the recreation partners, it's gonna be placed as relax along, we've got, uh, we're gonna have a bench every eighth of a mile. Something similar to that, that's just an example. Also, trail signs, we don't have any signage along, it's being designed now, and something we could actually use your help on. Right there, that is an original mile post on the, the railroad, I think that's actually up in Dover, we're going. If anybody knows where any of these mile posts are and would like to have an example of those or want to duplicate them, they're gonna be placed all along the trail. And if anybody knows where we can get it made, I really do know that as well, so, help them. The amenities, first of all, this is going to be a bare bone trail, it's gonna be a stripped of gravel, safe road crossings, and safe bridges. At that point, we're gonna open it. Everything else will follow. And that means that the landscape and paving, if that happens, historic markers and the like, all of that will follow. First of all, we get it over. Also, Elizabethan is already committed to putting connections to the River Trail at both ends, near the covered bridge, and also down Sycamore Shoal State Park, so that may completely ground Elizabethan. We think this is a far sighted investment for all of our communities. It will help improve the quality of life, it is exercise and recreation oriented, so it will be of effect on the health of the community. It's gonna be safe and accessible for walking and running and cycling and perhaps on rural sections between Johnson City and Elizabethan for horseback riding as well. It preserves the unique history and very importantly for Carter County, it preserves the East Tennessee Railroad. The railroad is not a dog, the railroad is rail backed, Johnson City actually owns that railroad. It's in suspended animation, it's at a meeting again. My personal opinion is at some point in the future, it will be, it can be resurrected. There have been a handful of rail trails around the United States that have been put back into active service. There is a tourism potential, depending on who you talk to, there's a large potential and there's a modest potential, but I will tell you that had that potential is realized, it's gonna be affected very strongly by this body. And also bicycle, maybe that's something I'm gonna take advantage of myself. Every bicycle trip means one less trip on roads, less wear and tear, uh, wear and tear and less air pollution. Now we're gonna make it reality, the trail is already under construction. Johnson City crews are removing the brush, they are removing the trash, they are scraping the road to make sure that it is level and they're getting ready for the second route. City crews will start working on the bridges very soon, the large bridge over US three twenty-one, those are gonna be contracted out, that's a made government. We're gonna make it happen with local resources coming. Of course, we appreciate it, if you individually would be interested in donating some money, uh, you can donate any time and expertise, any kind of donations that you might have. We think when we get to the amenities, that this is gonna be a great place for clubs and group, uh, projects, Eagle Scout projects, to do landscaping and planning and the like. And when you speak to the people in Johnson City and Elizabethan, uh, let them know how much you appreciate what is going on here. If you need more information, there are two websites to look at, tweetytrail.com is the task force's website, tweety.org is the Tweety Distort Trail Association's website, or of course you can contact any of the task force members, including Sheriff Magnus. Uh, and I'm gonna leave a handful of brochures and business cards today in case anyone would be interested in putting in the audience. Uh, if you need any other information, please don't hesitate to contact me and I would, uh, would be happy to take any questions if you might have.
Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Good?
Yes, sir.
What's the liability on this on the trail, someone will get hurt on the trail.
The trail belongs from the city of Johnson City.
I would order you to say you would be liable.
Any action? Uh, to the best of my knowledge, and I'm no expert on this, let's talk for the law, you know, the best of my knowledge, since the city owns the trail, a liability is involved.
Any other questions?
What's the mileage? Seven miles in Carter County, three miles in Washington?
I'd be surprised if there's that much in Washington. I'd be surprised if there's that much in Washington. Almost all of this trail is in Carter County, most of that is inside the city of Elizabethan. The trail is just under ten miles long.
Any other questions, Mr. Good?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Good. We appreciate your comments.
County, so they have their interest involved.
Now, we have the mayor's reports.
Mr. Chairman, Mayor Hess will report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Committee reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee had on the twenty-first or before we met last Monday week ago, and the first item on the agenda this morning that was recommended by the budget committee is a motion to accept the donations to the animal shelter totaling one thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. And I make a motion that we approve that so they can set in their budget.
I have a motion from Mr. Sisk, second by Ms. Keller, to recognize the donations to the animals. Is there any question? Great discussion. Kyle Rose, please.
Rupert Peters.
Hi.
Willie Campbell.
Hi.
Lawrence Hine.
Hi.
Nancy Brown.
Hi.
Joel Street.
Hi.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Perry Sisk.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Tester.
Aye.
Steve Moran.
Aye.
Tom Mavens.
Aye.
Joanne Lichtenstein.
Aye.
Charlie Baker.
Aye.
Bobby Diggs.
Aye.
Ken Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Kohler.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Pat Hee.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All lives, motion carried.
Okay, item number two, excuse me, a motion to approve fourteen thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars, seven and a cent, be transferred from the fund balance to cover the Title III project as bill. This was during the two thousand twelve, thirteen budget year. Commission approved the acceptance of the Title III funds for the purpose of Forest Service rescue operations. Motion to approve, I make at this time as recommended by the budget committee.
Is this new money, Mr. Lowes?
This money was received in February of last year, and it rolled into fund balance because we did not have a bill to write it back out. So this is just taking that money that we received from the forestry service to pay that bill to the rescue squad.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Sisk, second by Ms. Keller, to recognize and approve the transfer of this money. Any other discussion? Kyle Rose, please.
Rupert Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Lawrence Hine.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Hi.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Perry Sisk.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Tester.
Aye.
Steve Moran.
Aye.
Tom Mavens.
Aye.
Joanne Lichtenstein.
Aye.
Charlie Baker.
Aye.
Bobby Diggs.
Uh-huh.
Ken Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Kohler.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Pat Hee.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All lives, motion carried.
Next item, excuse me, regards to premium required for two thousand twelve, thirteen workman's compensation coverage. I make a motion to approve thirty-five thousand thirty-three dollars to be transferred from fund balance to pay the additional workman's comp premium for the Blueys in Carter County.
Mr. Lowes, I'd like you to explain. Just a minute, Mr. Chair. Let's wait for a second if we have another motion by Mr. Sisk. Do I have a second to approve this?
Second.
Second by move and motion to approve this transfer, paying the workman's comp from the fund balance. Now, Mr. Chair, thank you. Would you explain that, Mr. Lowes, how come that is thirty-some thousand?
Sure.
And we're taking this from the fund balance, correct?
That's correct. Each year, we are required to estimate what we think we will pay to employees for the upcoming year. We'll do that probably in March or April, we'll do it. For twelve thirteen, we did that estimation, however, we estimated low. So when they come back and do an audit at the end of the year, they come back and see what we actually paid versus what we estimated. You pay a percentage of each salary that's paid. Our estimates were low, so when the audit came back, the actual showed that we owed more premiums. That's what this invoice is.
Okay. How many, how many did we have on workman's comp last year, Mr. Lowes?
I do not have the answer to that question. I do not have the answer to that question. How many people actually were on workman's comp? I do not know, sir. I could call the carrier and find out.
Okay. I'd like to have a talk with that or see how many was on workman's comp last year. Okay?
Okay.
Mr. Vaughn, here.
Is it fair to say that for every employee, that you're roughly paying, I'd say on a salary of eighteen to twenty thousand, you're roughly paying two thousand dollars plus a year?
No, that's totally different. Workman's comp is not like retirement. The figure I gave you earlier was a retirement.
For retirement.
Fee. Workman's comp, it's depending on your job classification, if you're like me and you sit behind a desk, you don't have near as high rate than if you were a landfill worker or a sheriff's department worker.
So you're paying that two thousand dollars a year toward retirement?
Yes, sir.
For X number of people?
It's a percentage of their salary. All county employees are fourteen point one-two percent.
This is like a high-risk thing. The higher risk than your job is, the more you have to pay for workman's comp. Yeah, I understand that. The market insurance department's different than the employees' co-lives. I understand that, but I'm just curious seeing if you had a workman's comp last year. Good question. Any other questions? I have one. Is there enough in, this is taken by department by department, is that correct or not?
We take it by different classifications. The highway department pays their portion, the landfill pays their portion, and then the general fund, it comes out of the buildings budget as well as the sheriff's department budget.
Is there enough money in each individual department to make up for this increase?
There would not be enough money in the landfill or the highway department. Sheriff's department, you could probably move funds around, but that would require moving out of salaries or other line items. There's nothing left in those line items to pay that, so you'd have to do an amendment out of their other budget line items.
Then you're gonna write off the copy here. Who could, who couldn't?
I know that the landfill and the highway department could not, as well as the health department.
As what?
Health department.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Chair.
We're having to pay this, my gentlemen. An accident's on each department. Why don't we keep a record of which department this has come from?
Sir, we do have a record. We have a record. I can call it from a workman's comp insurance company. What I cannot give you is names of people and their injuries because that violates HIPAA laws. But I can give you a number as to how many happened in each department. Yes, you can have that.
Okay. Question? Question on the move. Kyle Rose, please.
Rupert Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Lawrence Hine.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Ronny Crivitt.
Aye.
Perry Sisk.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Tester.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Kohler.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Pat Hee.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
Before we read the results, Mr. Chair, would you care to read your disclaimer?
I let it slip. Because I am an employer of part of the county, I have no conflict, it's a personal of the vote, I agree with my vote and answer. All of the concern is the obligation of mine to, with the citizens of this body, respect them.
Thank you. All lives, motion carried.
Each year, we are asked to file a landfill financial assurance document, and that's in your packet. I make a motion as recommended by the budget committee to approve the landfill financial assurance document.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sisk, second by Ms. Keller, to approve the financial assurance. Do you have any discussion? Kyle Rose.
Rupert Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Lawrence Hine.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Perry Sisk.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Tester.
Aye.
Steve Moran.
Aye.
Tom Mavens.
Aye.
Joanne Lichtenstein.
Aye.
Charlie Baker.
Aye.
Bobby Diggs.
Aye.
Ken Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Kohler.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Pat Hee.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All lives, motion carried.
Next item from the landfill committee, the plan for a grant, and the grant provides fourteen thousand four hundred dollars that requires a three thousand six hundred dollar matching fund, and I make a motion that we utilize the three thousand six hundred dollars with solid waste transfer matching funds of the recycling grant.
I have a motion by Mr. Sisk, second by Mr. Lewis, to approve the transfer of these funds for a recycling grant. Do you have any discussion? Kyle Rose, please.
Rupert Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Lawrence Hine.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Perry Sisk.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Tester.
Aye.
Steve Moran.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Kohler.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Pat Hee.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All lives, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Next item, trustee, Mr. Lewis came to the budget committee requesting three thousand dollars to be transferred from the fund balance to the trustee's postal charges so that he could mail out the delinquent tax notices. I make a motion that we approve this transfer.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Sisk, second by Ms. Keller, to approve three thousand dollars to transfer from the fund balance to the trustee's office for posting. Do you have any discussion? Mr. Hodge?
Angry that Randall don't have a lot of money in his budget to take care of this.
You mean overall in his budget?
Yeah.
Well, we didn't discuss that. Randall came up with the idea to take it from fund balance, so that's not been discussed. And I can tell you that from his printout, there's not any line item that has that other than his salary lines. I don't have any other line item to take that large amount from.
You don't have any in your budget?
Well, like I just said, there's no other line except for a salary line that would have that.
Well, I'd like you to look at that for money in his budget, Mr. Hodge.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah?
Mr. Vaughn, can?
Three thousand dollars out of the fund balance. I've done a little adding fifty-three thousand dollars out of the fund balance. We can't continue to do that. Angry that you continually said that we messing with the fund balance, and that's why you make a budget. That's exactly why you make a budget, then you come along and get all you want by, hey, When are we gonna start listening to the lady with the numbers? She's got the numbers, we don't, and we appreciate at least you speaking out against taking from the fund balance because we're going to be in trouble. We've been told that for two years now, three, and we keep taking out the fund balance.
Any other discussion?
I make a motion to table this and send it back to the finance committee.
I'll second that. I have a motion for Mr. Hodge, second by Mr. Crivitt, to table this and send it back to the budget committee. Kyle Rose.
Rupert Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Lawrence Hine.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
No.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Perry Sisk.
No.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Tester.
No.
Steve Moran.
Aye.
Tom Mavens.
Aye.
Joanne Lichtenstein.
No.
Charlie Baker.
No.
Bobby Diggs.
No.
Ken Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
No.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Kohler.
No.
Russell Cott.
No.
Scott Sands. John Lewis, aye. Sonia Coler, aye. Russell Cott, aye. Scott Sands, Bill Armstrong, aye. Pat Heed, aye. Robert Goff, aye.
Aye. Twelve hours of hearing those. The motion does not carry. We'll go back to the original motion. Mr. Street. I'm sorry, Mr. Sisk.
Mr. Lewis informed us at the budget meeting that this is kind of time sensitive, that if he's going to send out delinquent notices so that people can start getting their taxes in, it needs to be done pretty urgently. I believe that's correct, Mr. Lewis. Keep that in mind as you consider the motions and voting on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sisk. Mr. Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Lewis's office is one of the offices that got cut five percent. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And his total budget was how much? I mean, is it about two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand?
This year is three hundred and two thousand four hundred dollars.
Okay, so last year, he got cut in excess of fifteen, eighteen thousand dollars, something of that nature. Mr. Lewis, at the time that he presented the other night, made the statement that he was told if he did come up short, and Mr. Lewis can correct me if I'm wrong, that if he got in trouble and he didn't have the money for this postage, he could come back to the Budget Committee and ask for help. So, you know, with that said, I think I've got enough confidence in Mr. Lewis if he had somewhere to go with this. We have sent out our tax notices. It's our funding. I mean, we have no choice, and I trust Mr. Lewis, if he had the funds, he would done it. We just simply cut him too much. So, I call for questioning on the motion, sir.
Question on those. Call.
Weaver Peters, aye. Willie Campbell, aye. Lawrence Hodge, aye. Nancy Brown, aye. Joel Street, aye. Richard Winters, aye. Ronnie Cribbitt, aye. Harry Sis, aye. Charles White Cannon, aye. Elsie Testor, aye. Lord, Steve Marin, aye. Tom Bowers, aye. Joanne Lichtenstein, aye. Charlie Baynes, aye. Bobby Dees, aye. Ken Arden, aye. Steve Chambers, aye. John Lewis, aye. Sonia Coler, aye. Russell Cott, aye. Scott Sands, Bill Armstrong, aye. Pat Heed, aye. Robert Goff, aye.
Mr. Chairman. Just a minute. Seventeen yes, six no. Motion carries. Mr. Street.
I don't have anything against Mr. Lewis. I know that he turned in some money from last year's budget.
I don't think any of us have anything against any of that.
And the thing of it is, what I'm looking at for this whole picture is this fund balance. And when it comes time, this coming year, you're going to have to start raising taxes again, so you keep going, this fund balance is going to keep you back down the road from there.
You're quite right, Mr. Street. Mr. Campbell.
I'm not against Mr. Lewis. And I think when he came back here in the early part of the year, we didn't give, we voted off giving money for the postage at that time. But I remember I sat on the Budget Committee, and we gave our word to these people that if they had trouble in the future, that they could come out and labor on in the year and ask us for some. And as a commissioner, I'm just keeping my word that I thought if I talked to Mr. Lewis and told him we would do that, that the Budget Committee would look at that and ask that. I'm just keeping my word.
President, Mr. Blankenship.
I think Mr. Lewis needs to be commended for bringing this forward before the postage goes up. It would cost the county more once the tax, the stamp or postage goes up. And I think this, he should be making, we should acknowledge his foresight in bringing this forward to us before we have an increase in the postage.
Thank you, Mr. Blankenship. Mr. Campbell.
I'd like to say I respect Randall's office and what he does. I had no idea they'd be cutting fifteen thousand dollars last year. That's who I thought you know for the first time. I had no idea that had been taken from the budget. And I appreciate the job he does.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sisk.
Yes. Next item. The Clerk and Masters office has been informed their software will no longer be supported after June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. Mrs. Marlin has chosen the local government as the new software vendor for her office, and this will require twenty-one thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars as an initial purchase. She has agreed to take the funds needed from her maintenance agreement, travel, and designated reserves in her budget to cover the expense for the software purchase. So, I'm presenting an amendment and make a motion that we approve the transfer of fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars from Clerk and Masters Maintenance Agreement line item, five hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifteen cents from Clerk and Masters Travel line item, five thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-five cents from the Clerk and Masters Reserve Account for the purchase of the local government software.
We have a motion by Mr. Sisk, second by Mr. Campbell, to approve this transfer. Any discussion? Call.
Weaver Peters, aye. Willie Campbell, aye. Lawrence Hodge, aye. Nancy Brown, aye. Joel Street, aye. Richard Winters, aye. Ronnie Cribbitt, aye. Harry Sis, aye. Charles White Cannon, aye. Elsie Testor, aye. Steve Marin, aye. Tom Bowers, aye. Joanne Lichtenstein, aye. Charlie Baynes, aye. Bobby Dees, aye. Ken Arden, aye. Steve Chambers, aye. John Lewis, aye. Sonia Coler, aye. Russell Cott, aye. Scott Sands, Bill Armstrong, aye. Pat Heed, aye. Robert Goff, aye. All last.
All last motion carries.
Next item is Sheriff Mathis requested funds returned from Southern Health Partners be up to fifteen thousand dollars be made available in his budget for building renovations based on approval by the Building and Grounds Committee, which was meeting simultaneously. And I don't know what the outcome was, but their report will be coming in a minute.
They can ask to approve it.
Do I make that motion this time?
I'll say it. I have a motion by Mr. Sisk, second by Mr. Sisk, to approve this transfer of funds in the Sheriff's Budget. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, when it was brought to the Buildings and Grounds Committee, we didn't understand that, or at least I didn't understand, that this was in addition to creating a holding cell for the prisoners, it was also to establish offices in that area. And since this body has not decided what to do with that building, I think it's kind of premature to put offices in there when this body has not approved what we're going to do with that building.
I think it's a good point, Mr. Blankenship, and I believe it would be in order if you'd like to ask to amend that, that these funds be focused solely on the holdings there.
You're talking about the kitchen.
Would you like to do that?
Please.
We have a motion by Ms. Blankenship to focus the expenditure of this money on the holdings there. Mr. ... If I have an amendment to this motion, asking for an amendment to this motion, would you amend this motion, Mr. Sisk?
Yes, I want to hear from Mr. Testor, who is chairman of the committee.
This is the kitchen area. It's not nothing that, this is still shows authority. It's the kitchen area. We're not asking, he's not asking for something like in the old jail. This is something that's still part of the shelter. It's not the old, it's something that's needed.
I don't believe that the Budget Committee was aware either of being for anything other than the holdings there, if we weren't aware of any additional offices.
I did mention that trying to take the old kitchen area just for offices for our drug unit. We don't have, they're actually using part of the upstairs where we don't actually have full heat or anything right now. We're trying, we would fix that and be able to use it. It's all right there at the Sheriff's Department, our kitchen.
You want to, what about the drug, is that what you said?
Yeah, my drug investigators are actually using upstairs in the winter. We don't have any heat or anything that's up there. That's where they're at, working out.
Is there not an office for that one?
No, that's, we booked them down there as a second office.
Okay, there was one.
That was undercover location. We used during some of those investigations that we did, we pulled them back when the space was fine there, when the temperatures wasn't bad. Now that it's freezing up there, so that's why I want to fix that.
But I want to do it in this area. There is no heat in this old kitchen. Inspector, Inspector Ray the other day warned us about that, that it could freeze if there's no heat or anything in that part of the building.
We have a, an agreement to amend this motion from Mr. Sisk. Do we have a second? Do we have a second to amend Mr. Sisk's motion? Or he has made a motion, or has agreed to amend it. Do we have a second? Say that. We'll vote on his original motion to approve this transfer of funds in the Sheriff's Budget for improvements on the holding cell and offices in the...
Kitchen area.
Okay. Mr. Street.
Just a discussion, and I think Sheriff Mathis gave the assurance, Sheriff, if we do do this, we have no, we've all had concerns about more money. You won't be asking us for any more money. You're going to do this from this money that we're allowing you to transfer, and you will take money from other line items to finish this project in jails. Is that...
Unless there's something for sale, but I'm not going to ask you for nothing out of this budget. I won't ask.
Well, what about the future budget?
Well, I will try to take that on in the budget to fix it if there's anything. I'm just thinking, but I think we've got enough to do there. I don't anticipate any other calls. I'm going to fix the holdings there. The judges really need, we'll be so we can hold inmates in there, start flooding them in the courtroom. That's the virtual room, we want to get that straightened out. That's moving forward. I don't foresee anything at all, so thanks, Judge, you're welcome.
You have more plans to ask us than what's...
Absolutely. It would have to be an emergency, so let me put it that way.
Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion?
I'm waiting on the motion.
Call.
Weaver Peters, aye. Willie Campbell, aye. Lawrence Hodge, aye. Nancy Brown, aye. Joel Street, aye. Richard Winters, aye. Ronnie Cribbitt, aye. Harry Sis, aye. Charles White Cannon, aye. Elsie Testor, aye.
Call. I'm in Holy Heart County. I have a conflict with the legislature. The votes must be voted. I have a third argument, and my vote, I suppose, my conscience, my obligation to my constituents and citizens, this body represents, aye.
Steve Marin, aye. Tom Bowers, aye.
No.
Joanne Lichtenstein, aye. Charlie Baynes, aye. Bobby Dees, aye. Ken Arden, aye. Steve Chambers, aye. John Lewis, aye. Sonia Coler, aye. Russell Cott, aye. Scott Sands, Bill Armstrong, aye. Pat Heed, aye. Robert Goff, aye.
Thank you. Twenty-one hours, two minutes. What do you think? Sisk.
Okay, next item. We have some amendments. General Fund One Oh One Amendment Number Four has seventeen items, two hundred thousand four hundred dollars and twenty-six cents, zero coming from fund balance. These are transfers. I make a motion that we approve seventeen items.
I have a motion for Mr. Sisk to approve these transfers. I'll second. Second by Mr. Hodge. Any discussion? Call.
Weaver Peters, aye. Lawrence Hodge, aye. Nancy Brown, aye. Joel Street, aye. Richard Winters, aye. Ronnie Cribbitt, aye. Harry Sis, aye. Charles White Cannon, aye. Elsie Testor, aye. Steve Marin, aye. Tom Bowers, aye. Joanne Lichtenstein, aye. Charlie Baynes, aye. Bobby Dees, aye. Ken Arden, aye. Steve Chambers, aye. John Lewis, aye. Sonia Coler, aye. Russell Cott, aye. Scott Sands, Bill Armstrong, aye. Pat Heed, aye. And Robert Goff, aye. Steve Chambers.
Twenty-one hours. Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve Highway Fund One Thirty-One Amendment Number Two. It's one item for a total of seven thousand dollars. Transfer zero coming from fund balance.
I have a motion for Mr. Sisk, second by Mr. Lewis, to approve this transfer of funds in the Highway Department, One Thirty-One. Any discussion? Call.
Weaver Peters, aye. Willie Campbell, aye.
I'm in Holy Heart County. I have a conflict with the legislature. The votes must be voted. However, I further argument, my vote and answer, my conscience and my obligation to my constituents and citizens, this body represents, aye.
Richard Winters, aye. Ronnie Cribbitt, aye. Harry Sis, aye. Charles White Cannon, aye. Elsie Testor, aye. Steve Marin, aye. Tom Bowers, aye. Joanne Lichtenstein, aye. Charlie Baynes, aye. Bobby Dees, aye. Ken Arden, aye. Steve Chambers, aye. John Lewis, aye. Sonia Coler, aye. Russell Cott, aye. Scott Sands, Bill Armstrong, aye. Pat Heed, aye. Robert Goff, aye.
Next item is Federal Projects Fund One Forty-Two Amendment Number Three. Six items for a total of two million eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and ten cents, zero coming from fund balance.
Put that before the motion.
Oh, yeah.
Motion by Mr. Sisk, second by Mr. Campbell, to approve the Fund One Forty-Two Amendment Three, six items. Any discussion? Call.
Weaver Peters, aye. Willie Campbell, aye. Lawrence Hodge, aye. Nancy Brown, aye. Joel Street, aye.
Because I'm in Holy Heart County, I have a conflict with the legislature. The votes must be voted. However, I further argument, my vote and answer, my conscience and my obligation to my constituents and citizens, this body represents, aye.
Richard Winters, aye. Ronnie Cribbitt, aye. Harry Sis, aye. Charles White Cannon, aye. Elsie Testor, aye. Steve Marin, aye. Tom Bowers, aye. Joanne Lichtenstein, aye. Charlie Baynes, aye. Bobby Dees, aye. Ken Arden, aye.
I'm in Holy Heart County. I have a conflict with the legislature.
Steve Chambers, aye. John Lewis, aye. Sonia Coler, aye. Russell Cott, aye. Scott Sands, Bill Armstrong, aye. Pat Heed, aye. Robert Goff, aye. Steve Chambers.
You want to change your vote, Mr. Campbell?
I do not.
Twenty-two hours. Motion carries.
Okay, next item. Budget Committee met on Monday, and later in the week, the school board had a meeting, and they approved an amendment, and it's kind of time sensitive, and they requested to bring it before this body. It was not done in time to come to the Budget Committee first, but they're just asking that you consider this. This grant has been awarded and needs acceptance in the, for the purchase of software. They need to utilize it by July the first. If you have any questions, we'll get an explanation, but I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve General Fund 141 Budget Amendment Number Four. It's for a hundred and twenty-six thousand, ninety-two dollars and sixty cents. And there's nothing coming from fund balance at all.
Second. Second. I have a motion by Mr. Sisk, second by Mr. Street, to approve this transfer of funds from the school. Is there any discussion?
Ms. Brereton?
How can I get this to us in time for the budget meeting?
I'll be glad to answer that. First of all, our Safe Schools Grant, which is item number one, and this is laid on your desk in case you're wondering what we're talking about. Item number one is a Safe Schools Grant. That was awarded, we learned about that Monday when you met. The board did not get to see that until Thursday after you met. So that's a grant for SROs and after-school program. That is just recognizing the grants, requiring no new funding. The second one, which is the one that is very time sensitive, this is for the funds to purchase a new student management system. The state of Tennessee used to fund a student management system fully. However, they changed the way they're going to do it for fourteen fifteen. And it requires the individual systems to submit additional funds for those systems. Originally, we had one software provider. Now the state has five preferred providers. And we've chosen one, and what they're doing is they're utilizing the funds that they received from the sale of Range Elementary School to go ahead and purchase that software. Now, the software must go live July the first. However, in order to get that implemented by July the first, we have to do scheduling and all kinds of things in that system before we put it live July the first. So we need to get the information to that vendor as quickly as possible. And we could wait till February meeting, but then that's going to put us even further down the line, and it'll put the school system behind the eight ball in order to get that implemented. And it's something that really needs to be done. I could not get board approval until Thursday, and to be honest with you, I wasn't sure they'd even approve it, so I waited. I did not bring it Monday night. And we could have brought these Monday night without their approval, but they were some questionable things. We want to make sure they were okay with it before we brought it to you guys. Items number three and four are not time sensitive, but they were included on the amendment, so I included it here so we could have consistency throughout our minutes. But one and two are the two items that are very time sensitive. They need to go ahead with the SROs and after-school program, and we must purchase the software immediately. So that's why it wasn't presented to the Budget Committee.
Do you recommend this, Mr. Lewis?
Yes, sir. I most definitely do.
I have a question.
I have a question, I'm opposed. Call and roll, please.
Beaver Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Lawrence Hodges.
Aye.
Nancy Brereton.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Because I'm calling for a county, I have conflict with the issue, the vote is not being voted. However, I further my argument, and my vote, I should only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and citizens. This body represents, aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Trevitt.
Aye.
Harry Sisk.
Aye.
Charles Van Cane.
Aye.
Aye.
Elsie Tester.
Aye.
Steve Murray.
Aye.
Tom Bauer.
Aye.
Joy Michael Schiff.
Aye.
Charlie Baynes.
Aye.
Bobby D.
Aye.
Ian Arnie.
Being in full way for a county, it still says, I have conflict with the issue, the vote is not being voted.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Cullen.
Aye.
Russell Pat.
Aye.
Scott Sands. Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Peggy.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
Anyone change of vote?
No matter.
Twenty-two items. Motion carried. My next amendment. Thank you, Mr. Sisk.
Yeah, I think that needs to be brought forward.
Thank you. Bill and you, Dan.
Looking like I said, the border sector, generator, and lighting and fashion. It's love, love, and all that good thing to do with. Much of G3. That's painful, thank you.
In fact, I talked with the legislature about the thing they did do to the buildings, the spectrum, okay? It's not contaminated. So they're trying down to coordinate with the roof to get a concrete truck in there. Summer play will be doing that aspect of it, to get a concrete truck into the field to tank it. And that's the last thing that we get going on with it. It is repaired, those generators are now running, good order.
Thank you, Chief.
They're working over it.
Thank you, Mr. Tatum. Landfill Committee.
Mr. Chairman, just simply would like to say that I thank Mr. Lyons for his continued hard work giving this grant for us. Just can't say how I appreciate his willingness and the great job he does, and the minutes reflect our business. So just another shout out to Mr. Lyons.
Thank you, Mr. Street. Law Enforcement Committee.
Mr. Chairman, the Law Enforcement Committee considered the possibility of forming the county's own probation department. Mr. Tester has done some labor done on this and very good job, investigated, I might say. And he tells us that there are twelve hundred and fifty-eight people currently on active probation in Carter County. The fees figured on that number at thirty-five dollars a month would account to a lot of money. It's going to be something on the order of five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. Now, there will be expenses. The expenses at this moment are indeterminate, but there would, of course, not, this would not be all paid money. But there's quite a good potential, and this is taxpayer money. It ought to be main in Carter County. Currently, the program is handled by crossroads. And we need to look into the possibility, I think, of making this change. It would require private act. We will need, if we're going to do this, to send it to the legislature and get the private act back and vote on that once it was there. And preparatory to that, I would like to ask Attorney Bowers, if he will, to address any legalities that might be contained, so we know we're not spinning our wheels on this matter. Would you do that, sir?
There are several things to consider insofar as a foreign private act, getting into mandating a sessions court where to use a probation office. And Mr. Tester brought some of the initial research to me, and we've completed that. I think the next step, in my opinion, is that we take time with Ms. Inger to contact some departments or some counties that have a countywide probation office in place. And as we did with some other projects, perhaps taking the chair of law enforcement, the mayor, chair of the commission, finance director, and talk to some of these people in these counties and make sure that this is something that, one, since they've started, it's worked well. Two, that it's something that actually does sound to be something that's a windfall for the county and not a cost. We certainly don't want to take on another budgetary item that's on a best. And then the analysis also as to your initial startup costs. There's some things to look at. There's a lot to explore here. There's some good things to explore here, but I think we need to, I'm always a big fan of going to other counties and finding out how it's worked for them. And if they've set it up to see what's been the pitfalls, the good things and the bad things.
Do I understand, sir, that you believe we have to glean more information before we ask you to prepare a resolution for the legislature to pass on this? Would that be good on our part?
I think we should at least visit a couple of counties and make sure. We've done it before, and it is, I mean, it's just amazing what you learn when Ms. Inger sits down with the finance director of different county. I sit down with the county attorney, the mayor sits down with the mayor, and we find out some information. I don't say it's not something we can't get done. I just think it's something we need to get that information, present it back. With the initial research we've already done, and then roll forward from there, if we like what here.
I agree with that a hundred percent. In that context, I think it would be well if the law enforcement committee pursues this further, gets the information together. And then at the next meeting of the commission, we'll present our findings and request action at that time, if that makes the approval of the call.
I'll say goodbye.
I have a motion by Mr. Winters, second by Ms. Brown, to refer this back for further investigation by the law enforcement committee and others, and to take it under advisement until at least next month, if indeed all information be gathered by the.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Mr. Chamber.
Before we did this, I'd like to say that we, I think we talked about this a few, four years ago, and, you know, we weren't, we weren't ready. It didn't seem like we wanted to do anything about this. So I think we need to go with Mr. Bowers's advice and look at what he said. As you know, we are, we are getting ready to go into, we're going to have a new, a new general sessions judge. We're getting ready to let, the person in the park's office up here. We've got elections coming up for this commission. And I would be very careful about how fast we move into this, because we are, it's going to affect a lot of people. And I think it would be, it would be better if we, if we can just take our time and do what, what our candidate time has said. Let's, let's look at this very carefully before we, before we start. Because it's one of those, one people that's going to be involved in this, it needs to have a study, if you want to fix that.
I agree, Mr. Chairman. I think that's what the motion was. Mr. Van Cane, did you want to say something?
With twelve hundred plus people, is that correct on probation in the present time?
Twelve fifty-eight, sir.
Twelve fifty-eight. Each of them paying roughly thirty-five dollars a month?
Yes, sir.
We've looked into this and we commend your committee for, for looking into it. But there's another committee been looking at it. And since we can't communicate between each other because of the sunshine law, we know this, that just this past week, we ran into a situation where a person had lost three jobs because he'd been on probation in and out for various reasons for two years. And he couldn't, he couldn't keep his job because of the fact he was fined. Well, when you don't have a job, bank's going to pay you fines, so you're, you're added, you're added another seven days probation. The fact of the matter, it does need to be looked at. There's no question about it. Of all the things that I've been talking about to by people in the community, is the probation situation is, is absolutely draining the people that can ill afford to pay for it, to start with. Therefore, it seems that it's in order to do something. But do you do it yourself, which we all know turns out to be a very expensive thing? Or do we look at outside sources to see how a private outfit would do this sort of thing? I agree that you've got to go slowly, because this is a problem. There's one other thing we haven't considered. We've got an election coming up of judges that are affected by this. I'd like to know how every candidate, and personally, I'd like to know how every candidate feels about and what he would do about if she, this sort of thing. But more importantly, I think we need to look at the share and how it would affect this situation. We'd like your expert opinion on, on whether we need to go slowly, fast, or, or not at all.
If you're asking for now, I think always listening to your county attorneys is a good idea. I think they're going to write direction and make, make any proper decision. From the chair's point of view, we'll be glad to help any committee or any way we possibly can, so. We don't really worry about a lot of probation, especially it does affect, it does affect us in the jail side of housing inmates, doesn't it? We're businesses, let them be in jail. I'll get them out some other stuff. But we'll help any way we can.
Mr. Lewis, did you have something? Mr. Lewis?
I want to ask Mr. Lewis a question. If they do change this probation thing. And you know, right now, we are what's called a litigation tax in this county where you get cost of speeding, it's ten dollars, and the cost is about two hundred and fifty dollars. And for that money that we pay up for litigation tax, Mr. Tester told me about taxpayers, do we get any, do the taxpayer get any money out of that now, that kind of litigation tax?
Are you talking about litigation tax, or you're talking about probation fees? Because I think you've got two different things. Okay.
Don't that go together to the probation office?
No, sir. Litigation tax is litigation tax, and probation fees are totally separate as probation fees. This would not affect litigation tax by any means.
They don't have nothing to do with it?
No, sir.
Long question. We have a question on the motion. Mr. Mayor. We have a question on the motion, Mr. Peter. I'm sorry. All in favor of referring this back for further investigation by the county attorney, the law enforcement committee, and others? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Health and Welfare Committee.
The only thing we have is the ABKs are now in place in the courthouse, in the courthouse annex. And the rescue squad is in the process of forming the classes for instructions. We had, I think, around between fifty and sixty people that were interested in being trained on the use of this. The rescue squad also extends to this whole community, anyone that wants to attend the class. They are more than welcome too. The only cost is the, if you want to be a card carrier saying that you are certified, then there will be a fee for that. But for the training and everything else, there is no charge at all.
Thank you, Ms. Blackenship. We have a motion to have a ten-minute recess.
I'll make a motion.
A motion to ten-minute recess. Second. All in favor, say aye. Five or six, please. Let me take this opportunity. I know we're finished with our committee reports. And before we move on, I want to recognize Ms. Blackenship for the work that she's done with these, the creep later things she has done. She's carried the whole load on that. And I'd just like to recognize her at this time for her work on that. We finished our committee reports and.
Mr. Chairman. He has gone to Highway Committee, but I don't have anything to add other than the, the list, and I guess.
I apologize.
And don't have no rules about all of these.
Again, I apologize for overlooking you, Mr. Peter.
I know. I'd like to know.
I knew you would. So let's go ahead with our consideration of county road lists. Do you have that?
I have, Mr. Perkins, we've got your road list in the packet. Mr. Perkins, we have your road list in the packet for, is this your 2014 road list for approval?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a whole new book here.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. I have a second.
I'll say.
We have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Trevitt, to approve the county's road list. It's been in your packet. You've had your packet through some time now. You had a chance to look over it. Any further discussions? Mr. Van Cane.
I'm going to vote against the road list for this reason. There've been, I have work orders, of work being done on roads in the county that are not on the road list. How that happens? Only, uh. The man who lives knows. Plus, there's one situation where. The work order said that road, that snow removal was being done. And there was no snow. X number of days before the work order and X number of days after the work order. Something's wrong with this picture. And, uh. I don't know how to handle it, except it will be handled some way.
Thank you, Mr. Von Cannon, any other discussion?
I don't want.
All right, Mr. Cannon?
I have no conflict with this. I've been there for thirty-seven years. Uh, we're just from about starting from. We do not do any private roads or anything like that. The state has the same trucks that we have now. And they're running the state highways. And people are getting the idea that it's a county highway department. But it's not. We also have conflict with rocks and cemeteries. The Jack Perkins and the Chairman. They love, check the papers, these roads are rock. They have the problems out. As far as that goes, we do not go on private routes.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Uh, any other discussion? Uh, because there's particular conflict with Colorado on this.
There we go.
Just Mr. Perkins?
Um, that's the last two big words. Since the first of January. Dan, this is Dan, I appreciate. He's a lot of people. And he gives. He's got some figures. Well, he's already, you know, like, three words.
Yeah, uh, since last year. We used around four hundred pounds of solid chat, which, uh, cost three hundred fifty thousand, uh. Paid out in labor, which would be in overtime, so closer to a little overseas there. But we can put in a lot of hours. On, on stove.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Colorado, please.
We've received.
Aye.
Really, Campbell?
So, no conflict with this, uh? Aye.
Lawrence Vaughn?
Aye.
Nate Frank? Joel Strick?
Aye.
Richard Watters?
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt?
Aye.
Eric Sis?
Aye.
Travis Mike Cannon?
No.
L.C. Testor?
Aye.
Steve Wood?
Aye.
Paul Bowers?
Aye.
Joanny Michaelchip?
Aye.
Charlie Mann?
Aye.
Bobby Dees?
Aye.
Ken Arden?
Aye.
Steve Chamber?
Aye.
John Lewis?
Aye.
Johnny Carter?
Aye.
Russell Katt? Scott Sains? Bill Armstrong?
Aye.
Pat Hicks?
Aye.
And Robert Robb?
Aye.
Twenty-one ayes, motion carried. Uh, let's record show that the reason Mr. Katt is not here, he had a family emergency. He, uh, talked to me during the recess, he kind of like. Now, we have our county attorney report, and I believe, uh, right now, we'll have to go to a closed session, is that right, Mr. Bowers?
If I can, I'll do some of the open stuff first, before we do the litigation report. That way, when I get back, from litigation report, I should be. If that's okay with the chair.
That's great, just let her sit.
This month. This April, from the animal shelter, as well as the mayor and myself. Took time to meet with the Animal Control Department of Washington County. Uh, to get some information and ideas about implementing a new program in White, Carter County. We later had an additional meeting, and we are now in the process, most of the process is drafting some regulations and, and a resolution. That will take a little time to get to you, but not a long time. We're, we're working on it, and it's something that the mayor, Ms. Jones, I'd like to go over. And we're looking at the possibility of, of, uh. Granting citation powers to our animal control officers. What we have now is when animal control officer goes on site at a home. If they see something that's a violation or a, a crime. Or, or a neglect, or nonfeeding, or, or anything of that nature. They in turn have to call our, our sheriff's office, having a road officer sent out, which we didn't have two teams, we was working on the same issue. And, and several of our neighboring counties. The animal control officer went on site, has the power to issue them a citation and take them to your general sessions judge or general sessions court. Essentially saving us having to call out one of our deputies. And I think that's something that we talked to the sheriff about, and he's obviously in favor, because it would take some of the pressure off him. And it allows our animal patrol officers, went on site, actually accomplish what they're there for, rather than just going out and witnessing and calling another officer in. Uh, it's something that we won't get right in the first draft. It's something we won't approve in the first draft. It's something you'll have problems and tweaks and changes. But we're gonna get you a draft and then start trying to hash it out and evade it, and see if there's something we can live with that's good for the county. Uh, we're not copying directly from another county, we're just taking some of their ideas. Very rarely do we, any of us have an original idea, so we went to some other counties to, to see what they've done, and, and see what's worked and what's not worked, frankly. Um, we completed the excess property sale, the first one, on two tracks. Mr. Loach and Ms. Byrd handled the sale as professionals and, and, and very proud to be a part of working with them and getting this accomplished. We sold two tracks, and both tracks brought a, a good amount of money. We had some neighbors on both tracks who both wanted the property, and sometimes. An auctioneer's told me that you just have to have two people that really want something to have a good auction. So we identified some additional tracks, and we're gonna start moving more tracks, so the excess property, and his refunds that go back. Ms. Ingrid, you correct me if I'm wrong, but go back to the general fund, is that correct? So if somebody will make in the general fund from excess property sale, and we get them back on the tax laws. Uh, we moved, like I said, through our first one, but we're working on another as well. Sheriff Mathis had me this month present to, um. He does some training for his, his, his personnel and his leadership sheriff's office. They had me come as county attorney to speak on some current issues and some issues that we can do to help. We, uh, lower our potential for liability and potential, and for documentation of information we give to our carrier. Whenever we have a lawsuit come up. And we talked about documentation, we talked about some other issues, some questions were raised by the officers. Of the questions they wanted me to look at, we looked at those, and, and then got an opinion letter back over to sheriff's office so they could share. I appreciate the sheriff being proactive and working ahead, instead of waiting till we have a problem. Doing his annual trainings can help us move some of these things forward. We closed out the win estate, that was an estate in which the animal shelter was receiving gift. It was a donation to our animal shelter. Uh, we completed something that you voted on to approve last month, and we have completed the documents. The check has been delivered to Ms. Ingrid, and been put in line item for use of the animal shelter. It's a considerable sum of money to help with the new shelter, and we were very pleased to get that wrapped up. It's, it's, it was really a wonderful gift for the county. Uh, we drafted a W, uh, resolution and private act for the water authority. That's been presented to utility committee, Ms. Coler, and I will be attending that committee meeting, answering questions, and that kind of us from attorney Tom McKee, and we hope to have that ready to go next month. Uh, we had a very interesting and, and complex issue arise. From, it was Commissioner Tester at the time, he called me on, really it was Officer Tester. Because he had a documentation to file a writ of execution on a. Home that was to be moved, it was a mobile home, but there was a quarantine for methamphetamines on that home. And it's just the, another example of the ongoing issue the county of Carter and city of Otoga and the city of Elizabethan are gonna face. With the growing meth epidemic, meth epidemic epidemic and its influence and its impact on real property and on land. And it was something that we researched, and then we went to the judge to make sure he was happy with what we, because he really had two orders from the same court. That if you read them, they really, really just directly in conflict. And it wasn't because the judge, it wasn't when I was, because the laws are really in conflict. We had to determine what was in the best interest and health of citizens. We got that answered, I think we saved the county from potential liability issue, and we had the judge's blessing by the end of the day on getting it done. And I appreciate the sheriff's department on that. It's something I never had to come up for, it was pretty different. Uh, we completed some research on the new order protection forms for the sheriff's department. We met with Judge Walton concerning that, and it's something also related to the judicial commissioners. The new forms allow for some custody provisions in children, it's something we're not used to seeing, it's not something we're used to enforcing. Also awarding of the, of the primary residents by judicial commission before you can go for a judge. It's something you obviously have to be very careful with, it's a great bill of power. Great bill of power, but it's something the law is allowed to happen, and, and we got our, our people prepped and hopefully avoid any potential liability on that. Uh, the private act for the parts and rec, which, uh, Mr. Peters, Commissioner Peters is kind of champion for the commission. Representative Kent Williams' office has advanced that to me. They had made some changes through their legal services, just to get to where they thought it would work. They sent those to me, I saw one or two things that really didn't capture what we tried to do here, I've sent those back. And that bill, I think it's gonna go forward, and we'll hopefully have it back for ratification for the commission, uh, later this summer. And, and that'll put that to bed. And it's a very important issue, especially for the rural mountain community where county park is, and it's something that will allow us to have better representation. One commissioner and one represented from each district appointed by the board. And allow them to be paid for their services, because they put a lot of time into this work. And it's something that I, I truly think we'll have done by the end of summer. Issue was raised by, Mr., by Attorney Rice. On behalf of the nine-one-one board, um, as you're aware, we had to move the records from the third floor for safety hazard, safety reasons. And we worked out, and the mayor's office has got to move over to now in one office. They've got in a separate room where they wanted a lease amendment, and I think the lease amendment was, was, was probably well found, that it was to allow us to assume liability for our own records. But also that how we would have those records secured. I advanced that lease agreement, at least the proposed amendment over. Uh, probably about six weeks ago, and I know that a lot of times those boards don't meet during the holidays, so I'm sure Ms. Rice will get that presented in January, and we'll get it back in February to look at and hopefully get it approved. Get that wrapped up.
We, we did make a just recently, and approved that, so thank you.
Did it get approved?
Yeah, we'll be getting it right back.
Good, thank you, Sheriff. The city county mon, uh, memorandum of agreement on the roof construction, extension of time on the parking lot was completed, and that's been laid in the minutes of last month, so that's. That's one project down, it faces a good leadership from the county in getting that accomplished. Uh, we had an issue come out of Chancery Court. Uh, as far as work release, a judge's authority to order compared to a work release committee, we completed our research. We've advanced that to our second court level judges. That really comes into effect when you have someone who's on, uh, uses for nonpayment of child support. And the question is, can they directly order the work release? In this situation, they go through the committee, there's no way around that. And it's something we completed. Had a meeting myself, county historian Scott Bowers and, uh, Mayor Humphrey, his office. And looking at some different counties where they do, uh. Restoration of, of abandoned cemeteries. And what we can and cannot do in the definition of what we're going to do for title searches to determine that it's, it's not private land but public land, so we can actually. Do such sort of restoration program. And we're talking to some other counties that have, uh, similar program in place, and it's something that we hope to get a draft back to the mayor and historian. Just the next few weeks, look over, and once they're comfortable with it, I imagine they'll have a resolution prepared, present it to you, commission for your full consideration. Uh, we did take some trips out. We had a couple of right of way issues on both cemetery roads and road list issues. Uh, Mayor and I went out to the individual's home. And I think by the time we left, they pretty well understood that at this point, they're in litigation, and they need to complete that litigation. Provide this county a court order, and once we get a court order signed by a chancellor, that we wouldn't have any trouble or any hesitation following that. But we really just didn't want to get the county in the middle of litigation and take a stance until those two neighbors work out their differences. We've, we've got enough of our own things, we certainly don't want Jeff in the middle. Two neighbors, we can avoid it. Uh, we got a request from the district attorney's office concerning research on the powers of judicial commissioners, both those appointed by this commission. And those appointed on a part-time unpaid basis by Jeff Walton. Uh, we completed our research, uh, sent a copy out to the mayor, sheriff. But we did get that back to District Attorney Clark and, and, uh, sent a copy to the court as well. Let them know exactly where their stance was, if there's some questions, potential county liability. Their judicial commissioner appointed, they're just not paid, they have the same powers, and statute's pretty clear that. You know, they can do the search warrants, arrest warrants. Just the same standard, uh, investigation and probable cause that a commissioner we've appointed, uh, has. And it's something Judge Walton has appointed a few of those, and it helps bridge the gap occasionally, and I understand why the court does that. We reviewed several T-DOT contracts concerning projects that, that Mr. Perkins' office has taken on and was happy to assume. There were good projects for the Hampton community, those have both been completed, the mayor reviewed them, sent to me, I reviewed them, they've been advanced on to T-DOT for, uh, to be completed, and that's something that we should have back before us again. Had several calls from attorneys on both, the, uh, pilot agreement for the spread lot. Uh, company which essentially is the old Schaefer building on Stony Creek. The transaction does appear it's gonna go through, and that's something when Mr. Anderson's here, I'll answer to you, because he knows the ins and outs a little bit more than I do. Also with moral industry requesting an extension, that's something we're waiting on Johnson City to give an approval, because it is in Carter County, but in Johnson City as well. That's something Mr. Anderson's giving up there on as well, but it's something I have been working on is through the attorneys at least. Getting them the documents from the last agreements and getting everything they need in place so they can review that. Completed research concerning committee appointments and the procedures, and I'm gonna come to rules and bylaws next month and lay everything out for you and some suggestions. One thing I saw some other counties do, I think it's not a bad idea, is rather than keeping our local rules through our minutes. As they actually adopt a just a small manual, it doesn't have to be thirty, forty pages, but we adopt a small manual just for our rules, for our procedure. It makes it a little bit easier for everybody to have in our hands. It's like when I put together the manual for, uh, Ethics eighty-one act, things of that nature, and had a lot of the different, uh. Acts and provisions that affect you as a commissioner and doing your job, that's something we could add into that, and just give to every new commissioners that take office. They'd have it right in their hand and be trained and be prepared to handle it. Rescue squad contract, which was, uh, discussed a couple of months ago. Uh, that was advanced in, uh, some time ago, and, and changes were sent back from Attorney Norris' office, those changes have been incorporated, it was nothing outlandish. Nothing changed the spirit of the agreement. That was advanced back to the rescue squad on December second, thirteen. And as soon as we've heard something from their board, at least initial review, then we'll get out to the appropriate committee here and start letting that review process happen. Um, I have attorney Jeff Ward here today with us from the carrier. And I've got several pieces of litigation to discuss with him, some potential litigation issues, and, and attorney Ward come up from Greenville to, to meet with us, and I'd like to now. Let him have a closed door session, he's gonna give you an offer on some litigation and a report on some litigation he's handling for the carrier. On our behalf, and he always does a fine job for us, and since we brought him up here, I'd like to let you guys hear directly from him and ask him some questions on this litigation.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Now we go into a closed door.
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to ask Mr. Bowers the situation on the Redham Bridge. What's that sound?
And you know, I had that written down, I'm glad you asked me that. We have got the complaint, we got the appraisals back on the property. My associate, we got Mr. William Miller out of Washington County who appraises right of ways. We have the complaints ready to file. And we're ready to roll. I didn't eat though. And, and I asked for your patience for a couple of weeks, and this is why. And I, I'm, I'm really excited about what happened yesterday. Mr. L.G. Shell, who can kind of the person who has some problems, he, he, as far as, not only was signing a deed to the county for his track, but also feeling that him and a neighbor, there was a dispute between the land, and we weren't the name of the. Mr. Shell come in yesterday, and him and his neighbor worked out an agreement as the ownership of that land. I told him to think of working an agreement to that, I would draw the deed for free. To get that squared away, that gets everything into Mr. Shell's property. One thing that saves the county suing another couple, another two individuals that we're going to get served, they're gonna hire a lawyer, we're going to post the bond, we're going to pay the court cost, and you're going to pay me to do it. So we get rid of one person, that gets it down to one person, Mr. Shell. Mr. Shell yesterday, based off the way I showed him the maps, says if he gets that deed over, he is now willing, and that's something I have to do with Mr. Perkins, make sure the offer's on the table, but I think he may be willing to settle the agreement. And go ahead and sign a deed based on resolving that first issue. I told him that I want this bridge built, the county want this bridge built, if he could work out an agreement with the neighbor, that I would gladly donate the deed. And, and, and if we, and I told him, I said, look, I said, this, the commission's already voted to file suit. If you don't have an agreement with these neighbors in about a week, and then a week later having an agreement with this county, I'm just gonna have to file suit, national combination process. But we were, and we had him ready. We had him filled out. And we wouldn't give him one last call once we had the appraisals coming, because I thought he would be surprised by the appraisal number, and he was. And he was a little lower than he thought he was gonna be. And I said, we can maybe work this out, and, and county taking into account not having to pay attorney's fees, not having to pay litigation, not having to wait. And he was receptive, and he called me this morning at seven fifteen at my office. And said he'd spoke to the other neighbor, they were agreeable to sign the deed over to him, that'll put us working with one individual only. And he was agreeable to our offer, if I go over to Mr. Perkins, make sure that offer's still standing. We may have this same worked out in the next seven to ten days without litigation. Yeah, I'm, I'm really glad you asked that question. Because I had it written down, I somehow just missed it, went through my list, I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Bowers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, there is one item, uh, that I've spoken with attorney Bowers, and I would like to go ahead.
Sure.
Before we get into closed session. It's an AG opinion that I requested through Senator Pro's office in July, so if we.
Sure. An AG opinion was requested insofar as the commission's availability or the ability to amend the debt service on the floor after the budget committee meeting. Meeting with mayor and finance director, the AG is the opinion that we cannot amend that on the floor. I disagree. AG's a good set of lawyers and probably more experienced than I am, but I'd say disagree. I do feel, and it's something I spoke with the mayor about, and it's something I spoke with Sheriff Bowers about, and it's something Ms. Loach and I have met about. That. The eighty-one act itself. The scheduling, and there's some bad, really bad words in the eighty-one act. And the mayor and I had the idea, well, let's just get the budget to the commission in June, so we've got some time to present it and come back a couple of meetings. Ms. Loach and, and Ms. Loach and Ms. Blankenship, probably our eighty-one, eighty-one act experts in this county. Quickly pointed out that the, uh, the act states we have to present the budget in July. Well, when your chairman is not, when your mayor is not your chairman of the commission, he has a right to veto a budget. He has so many days in his eye. Well, if he vetoes that budget, we then, to comply with the Sunshine Act, have to then in turn. Give so many days notice prior to being able to meet again to potentially override that veto. If we don't meet again to potentially override the veto, then we break the eighty-one act by not approving it in July. You have an act. You have an act that states that the budget must be presented in July, approved in July, and another provision allows the mayor the opportunity to veto, and he, and that's his right to do so as the mayor. We're not, but we have to look at potential, and this is something I mentioned to Chairman Bowers, and potentially look at the calendaring of July a little bit better. And we have to look at the calendaring insofar as potentially presenting the budget early in July so that we have some days, if we have to meet again, to do so and still do so in the month of July. And we have to take some real, real serious look with the budget committee itself insofar as when they present this budget, it really needs to be something that's pretty close to what we can live with. We, we really need, we need a little bit more fine-tuned budget committee process that when we get a number of this full commission, we've got something a lot of people can live with. And I know every year it's, it's a lot of work and debate to get that budget something you can live with. I understand that. But we just need to really look at the process, and, and Ms. Loach has already had the counter-approve of this year, but it's something even next year, we have the potential to countering, and, and I think it's something we meet with our legislatures, and I think it's many simple change could help us a lot in the eighty-one act. The eighty-one act needs an amendment, because it states that it must be approved. Ms. Ingrid, you tell me if you think I'm wrong, the budget must be approved in the month of July. Simply saying must be approved in the month of July or earlier would allow it to be presented in June and give us a couple of months to work on it at the commission level. So, there's some changes, there's some special work there, yes.
Uh, in the past, when the budget time comes, uh, it was supposed to have it by July.
Right.
Right. This commission beforehand, which I've been on before, would set a tentative tax rate, same as last year. I mean, getting the budget set.
Good, continuing the budget resolution.
Three months down the road. Is that correct?
Yeah, we are probably virtually the only county in the state, I would dare say, one of the only two or three that's an eighty-one. Ms. Ingrid, you tell me if I'm wrong, that has a budget ready in July. Your experience talking to the eighty-one act financial directors, do they begin, are they done in July or beginning in July?
When I called the last time, I called all the financial directors for the nineteen eighty-one act, and they laughed at me when I asked if they had their budget approved in July. They were starting their workshops in July.
And that doesn't mean that just because everybody else is doing it wrong, I'm glad we're doing it right, but we need to sit down with our legislatures. There needs to be a few tweaks on the eighty-one act that makes it logical and that it can be done in a year. And, and there's no way to present something and then have it completed if you have a veto process, and then the Sunshine Act, the days just don't balance. Yes, ma'am?
Well, I, Ingrid, during the break, you know, when we planned on doing our scheduling for this year, honestly, with everything we're faced, and I don't think we can start early in that.
I, yeah, and I, I think it's something that we have to look at the process each year. We have to get the actual budget committee and put more teeth in that committee insofar as what they come out with we're closer to, and maybe even more commissioners attending there and having their comments there, so that when we come out of that committee, we got a number that we know pretty well represents what we want to do. It's, I, I, it, the, the eighty-one act in the month of July, it feels like there's almost no way you can go that you don't violate some statute. And, and you do your best, yes, ma'am?
Whenever I talked to C task early on, when we first went under the eighty-one act, they, uh, they had no problem, the lawyers with C task, had no problem with the budget committee bringing the proposed budget, uh, to the commissioners, uh, in June so that they could look over it and, and be prepared for.
And just not do a formal presentation for July.
Not a formal presentation, but, uh, that they would be given that and given the opportunity to raise questions during the month of June for the actual vote in July.
Right.
And we have that scheduled to give to the full commission in the June meeting, and then it'll be approved in the July meeting.
But even potentially to even have discussion in the June meeting might be helpful to help hammer through some of the process. Uh, it, it's tough, I know that, and I know you guys face tough challenges on that, but the earlier we work on it, the better, often the more time we have.
I'm, I'm just curious, what's the recourse? All these other counties don't have it done, so what are they doing? Putting the county commission in jail?
No.
I mean, what's, I mean, you've got it all through the state evidently. I mean, it's pretty well known fact that, you know, it's, it's a tough time. Of course, we want to do it if we can, but, uh, I mean, have you ever heard any of them talk about the recourse or the accident was taken against them because they were unable to get it done?
It's an offense by your finance director, and that's what we're trying to avoid.
Well, and when I called the state, because this was questioned a couple of years ago by the mayor, and when I called the state to see what the recourse would be if we didn't make it, because as you know, I think we approved it July the twenty-ninth, the first time this was brought up. And the state told me that there was no recourse unless someone called their hand on it. And we had someone calling our hand on it, so we had to do it. It would be called, I believe they told us it was a felony offense, did they not?
I don't want to say felony, I, I know it's a criminal offense, I'll leave you at that. I, it was, it was enough to scare me.
I don't know who got it, but it was enough to make me want to make sure that we got it done in July.
We have a great finance director, I didn't want to.
So, we're, we're, we're held to a higher standard in Carter County by our citizens.
Which is a good thing.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, just want to clarify one thing. I think we're getting a little bit off. I know there's a lot of, um, issues that we have to address, but when I took my question to the Senator Crowe's office and the attorney general, it was specific, because I remember that July meeting, and I had three to four points that I outlined specifically for my reasons for veto of that budget. The first and foremost was, my interpretation of the statute, there was a clear violation of the statute. We shouldn't be concerned about whatever other county does, whether they're in, uh, compliance or not in compliance. This is Carter County, and we shouldn't have to have anyone to call our hand on the way we conduct business, because we made a commitment to the people that trust us, this office, to do it properly. And through the years, right, wrong, or indifferent, we have violated the statute on a number of occasions. And in that meeting, Attorney Bowers did indicate, based on his opinion, he didn't feel that there was an issue, and we needed a, uh, AG opinion. So, I made the request to follow up, to see, so that we would know going forward if there's a true, true issue. And it does take a long time to get those, because I made it then, we got it last week. Uh, and it, the question that was posed is very direct and to the point, and it does include those counties that fall within the nineteen eighty-one financial management act. And the question was, did the county commission violate the statute when they came in after the public hearing and amended the debt service allocations? The statute is extremely clear, the AG, uh, reinforced that, and they stated case law that supports that. And it says specifically, when the words of the statute are plain and unambiguous, the assumption is that the legislature intended what it wrote and meant what it said. And in that case, they were clear, you as a commission can amend a budget that's presented to you, provisions of it, with the exception of the debt service portion. You violated that because you reduced those debt service, uh, amounts considerably over what had been proposed in the budget. So, the message here is, going forward, if you set a budget, it comes to this commission after it's been a public hearing, you don't alter that debt service, because what we're doing, we're digging a hole going forward to all future commissions. And I told you on that day, you are putting future commissions at a serious liability. You're setting them up for failure. So, we shouldn't have to worry about anyone calling our hand on it. We should follow the statutes, and we should make changes to our process to ensure that we do follow.
I think now we can go into a closed-door session.
Yeah. Yeah, we've got, we've got Ms. Ward.
At this time, I'll, uh, non-commissioned personnel, step outside, please. Commissioner, come back to order. And, uh. No, it's the county attorney, attorney, go ahead with this presentation.
I've completed my non-litigation matters. The only thing is the offer that Mr. Ward brought to the table, we have a motion on that to give Ms. Ward some direction, go forward on behalf of the county. On the, why, case?
You make a motion to.
To go forward and do what needs to be done.
Or to reject the offer that was made?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a motion by Ms. Brown.
Second.
Second by Ms. Blankenship to reject the offer from Ms. Pythip, and to go forward and, uh, take care of that matter. Is there any other, uh, discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those motion carries.
And the other issue, of course, is the, uh, issue that the chairman, mayor, myself have taken back to the insurance carrier requesting to reevaluate coverage, a common law matter. If coverage is not extended, I'd like permission to, since Ms. Ward handled the first matter, get him in immediately in the second one as well. Of course, we'll try to go to the carrier first.
A motion by Ms. Cull.
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown to, uh, uh, take that back to the insurance carrier. Is that correct?
And then therefore reject if Ms. Ward involved that.